Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will now call this meeting to order. Thank you so much. Welcome everyone to this city commission meeting. This is our first meeting in the month of May. Twenty twenty five, we have before us our agenda and we will begin with roll call with Commissioner One.
DeAndre Knoxen, District One.
Keith Love, District Two.
Thelma Bowie, Commissioner at Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner at Large.
Chris Sharp, District Three.
All right, thank you very much. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. Establish six of the seven commission members present. And at this time, we're happy to have with us for the invocation, we have with us Reverend Otis Lane from Hunter Chapel CME. Reverend Lane, if you'd like to come and approach the podium, after which we will have Commissioner Knoxen lead us in the pledges. And then Reverend Lane, if you have something that you'd like to share with the community about your church activities or anything, you can do so after our pledges.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for leading us in the invocation.
Shall we pray? Father God in heaven, we first of all acknowledge the reason that we're here, Lord God, in order that we might support our community, in order that we might be in bond and unity and one together, taking care of those who are in most need, Lord God, the poor and those who are marginalized and minimized, Lord God. So we just ask that you continue to allow us to make those decisions on their behalf, Lord God, in order that we might continue to have a city that's worthy of you, Lord God, and worthy of the other people that live in. In Jesus' name we pray, and the people of God said.
Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Hey man, real quickly, we've been working on a project with some peer jury ideas for juvenile intervention and prevention with Lamar Police Department. We just had a meeting with the district attorney and we're gonna get ready to try to pilot something where we can offer our young people better choices and allow them to make different choices by intervening early as it relates to some of the issues that we're having with our youth in all communities. So it's gonna be something that we hopefully can pilot and bring it here to Texas and Texas City and be able to help get our kids out of the system as opposed to getting them in the system. So that's what we're pretty much doing at Hunter Chapel over by Carver Park. And I wanna thank the commissioner from last year where he had, we had an abandoned house and it needed to be boarded up. And I called him and he got some people over there right away for us to get it all boarded up. So again, I wanna thank you for that for last year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, brother. And let the citizens of Texas City know where Hunter Chapel is located, just in case someone wants to.
It's at sixty-three twenty Carver Street, right across the street from the park.
Thank you so very much. We do have a few proclamations and presentations to give today. So when I call you on up, you can come on up. And May fourth through the tenth, two thousand twenty-five is Small Business Week. And so I'm gonna read this proclamation about Small Business Week and then we're gonna have our representatives from Texas Lamar Chamber come on up and receive this. Whereas America's small businesses are the backbone of our economy, driving innovation, creating two out of every three new jobs and supporting our communities by fostering economic growth and opportunity. And whereas small businesses in Texas City contribute significantly to the character, prosperity, and vibrancy of our local economy, offering essential goods, services, and employment opportunities to our citizens. And whereas the Texas City Lamar Chamber of Commerce plays an essential role in promoting, supporting, and advocating for small businesses, helping to ensure their growth and success in our region. And whereas the City of Texas City in partnership with the Texas City Lamar Chamber of Commerce recognizes and celebrates the resilience, ingenuity, and dedication of our small business owners and entrepreneurs. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim May fourth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, as Small Business Week. And we encourage all citizens to support local businesses and recognize the vital role that they play in strengthening our community in partnership with the Texas City Lamar Chamber of Commerce. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on the seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-five, signed by myself, Mayor Dedrick Johnson, and attested by our City Secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. And we're gonna call our chamber representative, our chamber director, Mr. Tim Kopp is here, along with some other board members he has, Mr. Corey Moss, and anyone else you have with you. Oh, you can all come on up. Thank you very much. On behalf of the city, we'd like to present this to you all, to the chamber, and thank you for all the work that you do in our city as it relates to small businesses.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. And feel free to have some words at the podium if you'd like to.
You know me better.
Well, first off, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate this honor very much. Small business is the heartbeat of the national economy and we know how important it is. I think there's over seven thousand small businesses in Galveston County alone. And so, and you know, when you start looking at the mom and pops and so forth, it just, that's the, that's the heartbeat. And so, we also appreciate, I see John sitting down there on the end and I think of Kristin Edwards and the Economic Development Corporation and the partnership that we have with you guys here working with that. So thank you for all the efforts of all of us working together to see small businesses thrive. I do have with me Corey Moss from Valero, who serves as our chairman this year. And then I have with us Mandy McMillan Crowder, who serves as our chair-elect from a small business in Remax. So we kinda got both ends of the spectrum covered here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, today is marks the beginning of Professional Municipal Clerks Week, proclaiming May fourth through tenth. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. Whereas the office of professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and government agencies at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education, program, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May fourth through May tenth as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our very own municipal clerks and all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of Texas City on the seventh day of May, signed by Dedrick Johnson and our municipal clerk, City Secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. I'd like Ms. Ramari and our, is our records manager, does she wanna come on up here and get some of this with her? Receive this together. It's a very important job that both of you do. So on behalf of the City of Texas City, I do, and the commission before you, I do wanna thank you, Ms. Ramari and Ms. Renee Edgar for doing an awesome job processing all of our city documents and being the official keeper of our records. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. You have words if you'd like to have words, either of you?
Thank you so much.
All right. And next we have a, our third and final presentation is to commemorate National Police Week. May eleventh through seventeenth, next week, is National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers across the nation, including the dedicated members of the Texas City Police Department, serve with valor and integrity, safeguarding our communities and upholding the rule of law. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-one, and more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, their names forever etched in the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas National Police Week serves as a time to honor these fallen heroes and recognize the service of current officers and express our gratitude for officers and their unwavering commitment to public safety. And whereas, the City of Texas City acknowledges the selfless dedication of our local law enforcement, law enforcement officers who risk their lives daily to protect our residents and uphold justice. And now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May eleventh through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, as National Police Week. And all citizens are encouraged to honor and support our law enforcement officers, both past and present, to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on the seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-five, this is signed by myself, Mayor Dedrick Johnson, and attested by our City Secretary, Ms. Ramari Lee. I'm gonna ask Chief Cravens to come on up and accept this word on behalf of Texas City Police Department. Thank you, Chief. On behalf of the mayor's office and the commission before you, we want to present this to you and say thank you for all the work that you do in our police department and all the men and women who serve in law enforcement with me. Certainly able to have some words if you'd like to.
Just one quick announcement. The annual Galveston County Police Memorial will be hosted by the Galveston County Sheriff's Office this year. Next year, we'll be hosting it, but it'll be Monday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the fourteenth, so next Wednesday at ten thirty. And it is open to the public. So we'd like to see you out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. That concludes our proclamations for this, this meeting. We do have some reports, a report to give as we do every commission meeting. We have reports from our respective departments. Today, we're gonna hear from the athletic division of our recreation and tourism department. We'll hear from Mr. Jamarcus.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
All right, so I'll be giving a short presentation on our programs that we offer in our athletic program here for the City of Texas City. The Parks and Rec Department. So some of the programs that we do offer is tennis, volleyball, basketball, track and field, and pickleball as well. So for our tennis program, last year, our after-school program, we hosted one hundred and twelve participants. Our schedule for that class is five thirty to seven thirty PM. The age group is six to eighteen. The cost of the program is twenty, twenty dollars. And also in the summer, we had thirty-nine participants. And that schedule, it starts at eight AM to twelve PM. The age group is six through eighteen. The cost is a little bit different because we have beginner and advanced classes. Those classes are twenty-five for beginners, thirty-five for advanced. And then we did have other activities. We actually competed against Galveston Summer Track, I'm sorry, Summer Tennis Program as well. Our volleyball program this year, fall two thousand twenty-four, had seventy-five participants. That program ran from Monday through Thursday with practices on Tuesdays and Thursdays, games on Mondays and Wednesdays. And the cost of that program was sixty per, per, per player. And that's a picture of the champions from last year. One of our largest programs is our basketball program. We had, this year, we had two hundred and ninety-seven participants. The age groups range from six, well, actually five, to fourteen. The cost of that program is seventy, seventy dollars. And again, that program goes from Monday through Thursday and we also have games on Saturday. We did have some post-tournaments that we hosted this year, some postseason tournaments. So we did host the two thousand twenty-five TAF Youth Basketball Tournament. For those of you that do not know, we are sanctioned under a athletic program, Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, which we've been a part of that since way back. But this year, we had an opportunity to host. We hosted twenty-eight teams this year from, from multiple cities around Texas, Galveston, Pasadena, Lake Worth, Waco, San Angelo, and Rallett. And we did host it those two days, which was March twenty-second, March twenty-third. Moving right along to our summer programs, our Summer Track Program, we had sixty-two participants. The cost of that program is thirty dollars. We actually have our program open right now. So if you would like to register, you can click the link on our website and you can register right there at the website. Or you can come to the Lari Fitness Center's athletic desk. We did have circuit meets in La Porte, Baytown, Goose Creek, and Deer Park. And we did have postseason meets. Those meets were in La Porte. They hosted regionals there. And those kids that advanced, they went to the state games, which is hosted in Brownsville, Texas. We did have six participants that, that actually participated. However, none of them placed in the top three. So I think one of them got sixth and one of them maybe got like seventh place. But we did have some, some kids that participated in that meet as well. All right. So this is one of our new programs. We just had our first season, last season, pickleball. It's a very popular sport. In the morning, we have anywhere from twenty to twenty-five consistently, every morning, from Mondays through Fridays. The first league did have twenty-nine participants. We had singles and doubles. Most of those participants were seniors. So we're really trying to make sure that we keep them bought into the program and make sure we have them come back this year. The cost of that program was twenty-five dollars and that program ran on Mondays and Tuesdays. We had doubles on Mondays, singles on Tuesdays. So here's a quick overview of our participation by the year. If you notice, this year, our Summer Track participation went up by two. Our Summer Tennis Program actually increased as well by four. And then pretty much everything went up except volleyball. I think because the six and under group, usually we only get maybe five or six girls. So we had to give a couple refunds, but hopefully this year we'll have enough girls to, we'll have six and under as well. All right. Here's some of our youth partners that we partner with that use our facilities. So we have Galveston County Youth Soccer. They use our facilities. Texas City Girls Youth Softball use Tarpe Park down on Bay Street. And then we have Texas City Little League, which utilizes Goddard Park for their leagues. So this is a quick, quick numbers of some of the inventory that we have. We have seventeen baseball and softball fields. We have one football field at Carlos Garza Park. We have three multipurpose fields, nine soccer fields, five gyms, including concession stands, and one pavilion. All right, coming soon, we're gonna kick off a kickball league at Carver Park. Here's a little bit of the information. This will be a eighteen and up league. You can have up to twelve players on each team and the registration fee will be two fifty per team. This should be something very exciting for that community. So hopefully we get that off the ground and that becomes a success.
Thank you, Jamarcus. Commissioners, do y'all have any questions, Jamarcus, in athletics?
Is there a prize if you win the kickball tournament?
So, so usually, in most sports, we do have a, we have medals or for this, we may end up getting a trophy. So yes, it will be. And hopefully we can do this seasonal, like we'll have a spring league, a fall league, and so on and so forth. Any other questions?
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Recreation and tourism continues to stay busy in all areas, fitness and activities, special events. We really appreciate that department. At this time, we're up to a public hearing we have. A public hearing will be on the request received from Hugh Patrick Constructors, Inc. to change the zoning of six point zero eight two one acres located at twenty-six twenty-eight Texas Avenue from District E, General Business, to District F, Light Industrial, for third-party storage of industrial equipment, materials, and supplies and other uses. We'll hear from Ms. Kim Golden.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So this is a zoning request that comes to you from the zoning commission. The request is to change from District E, General Business, to District F, Light Industrial. The recommendation is Light Industrial because that requires any outside storage to have a fence around it. Also, the property is in the gateway and so they're, the applicant recognizes they'll have to upgrade to be compliant with the Gateway Overlay District requirements. There's also a requirement to have a barrier or buffer between their use and the adjacent residential use. That is all known to the applicant and recommended by the zoning commission in line with the ordinances. The zoning commission held a public hearing. Thirty-two notices were mailed to adjacent property owners. I believe there was one person who showed up and gave comments. Their concern was with, they've got some plants and some birds and things adjacent to the back property line of their home that they were not wanting to be disturbed. That is actually part of a pipeline easement, so it's not, it's not clear that it will be disturbed, but that was the only concern that was brought forward about the rezoning. So be glad to answer any questions, but this is the public hearings, public hearing part.
Commissioners, is there anyone who has any questions of Ms. Kim Golden relative to this issue? Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in favor of this rezoning request during this public hearing? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this rezoning request, the public hearing? Yes, sir. You can, you can make your way to the podium if you don't mind and that way we can get you on the microphone and on record. Let us know your name and what your position is. How you doing, sir?
I'm good, sir. My name is Dennis Erby. My mom has lived at twenty-six oh nine Second Avenue North since she was fifteen. So she's been there seventy years this year. She, she, she's getting up in age. She's eighty-five in July. And I didn't know what was, I received a certified letter from the city. You know, stating that they wanted to change the use of the property and, you know, I just wanted to let you all know that we don't have an objection to them doing whatever they're gonna do. I'm not sure. But just one thing I wanted to point out. I made a letter, I wrote a letter of what kind of things are there and what is possible to be there and even the bigger scale.
Thank you, sir.
I have enough to give all of you all a copy of this. It's just a letter I wrote of what's on the property and some birds that I had seen in my backyard. I'm, I'm, I guess what you might call a naturalist. I mean, I like, I like to watch the environment and I like, I like to see animals and things like that. And with a little planting and planning, this property could be used in a way where you could have youth activities and educate youth about species of, of animals that are, that are in decline in our country, around the, probably around the world, but I know in, in, in our country. My brother was married to a, a young lady. He is passed. But her father was a member of the Audubon Society Association and they, every year around Christmas, they do what is called a Christmas count. And it's carried on throughout our country within a two-week period around Christmas. And they count the number of, they count the birds they see and the number of the birds that they see. And if anyone's interested, you can probably go to an Audubon website and they'll let you know that the, the birds are in decline. There's sometimes on the news, there's stories of how the migrating birds hit the buildings in Galveston because the lights are left on at night on those buildings. I'm not sure if anyone's ever mentioned that. So the thing for them to do is to, to turn the lights off on the buildings so the birds don't get confused and they hit the building and kills them. They're, you know, they're migrating. So this is a piece of property that north of Texas Avenue, but on the south side of town. And there's very various birds on this list that I have, that I've seen in my mom's. I've actually seen them and only the ones that I'm ninety-nine percent, most of them, I'm a hundred percent sure what I was seeing. And there's many species that I was not able to identify because I don't, I haven't seen them often enough to, to know what they are. So that was my concern is that, you know, maybe you could, they could consider using the property in a more educational way. Because there is a lot of beautiful, beautiful birds in, in Texas City. And, and the thing that we, we, the people, have to do, is, we don't have to, but we can choose to, is we can choose to, is, um, make the, make, make the environment that is welcoming to them. You know, provide a, provide a place that's safe for them. My mom's yard, um, is, is, a lot of people might say overgrown, um, bit unkept in the back. But if you go to a property where it's mowed and it's just trees and grass, most of the birds that I've listed on this list, you're probably not gonna see. Because that's not the type of environment that they like.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Erby. We appreciate it.
Okay, well, I appreciate y'all, and thank y'all. Have a nice day.
Yes, sir. So Kim, I just want to, uh, Ms. Golden, I wanna be clear. The request is to, uh, rezone the property from District E, General Business, to District F, Light Industrial. But, uh, regardless of the zoning, uh, qualifications, these, these, this property does fall in our industrial business district?
No, it is, it is north of Texas Avenue.
North of Texas.
Um, so that is, you know,
That's right.
North of the industrial business district. Um, what they advise us is, it, it's an existing building. It used to be a grocery store. It was originally built as a grocery store, which you guys from Texas City probably know about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and was a grocery store until the seventies, and then it's been this, used as a headquarters for a construction company since then. It's currently not being very actively used. It, it's got a yard, but the intent is to use to store inside the building. And if there is any exterior storage, they will have to put a fence up to screen that. That's a requirement of the District F, Light Industrial.
And I think, uh, Mr. Erby, who just spoke, lives across the street, according to the address he gave.
The, he, his, his mother's property backs up to his property.
Twenty-six oh nine Second Avenue. Okay, yes, twenty-six oh nine.
Is there a map of this?
I believe there's one on there. So that's the survey. That would, that would show it. I don't know what you're wanting to see, Commissioner, but the survey.
I was just trying to, you guys were talking, I just wanted to.
Is there an aerial attached there?
No, it's just a plaque.
Just the plaque.
So there's the plaque. Again, it shows Texas on the, on the bottom of the page, and then I believe Mr. Erby's mother's property, um, yeah, north of the pipeline easement.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't know what that is.
Do we have a mouse or touchscreen?
It's a mouse.
Can you give it to Kim so she can see, she can maybe show us?
So...
Just hand it, is it, is it, Kim, can you come over to the, uh, to the mouse and show us what the property in question?
And you get asked.
Yeah.
So, I've turned on the highlighter. This property is right there. Can y'all see it?
Yes, yes.
It, it's, it's one of these properties back against this back property line.
And the property in question to be rezoned is where?
Is all this six point eight two eight.
Okay, got it. Mm-hmm. Commissioners, do y'all have any more questions?
Motion to close the public hearing, Mayor.
A second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to close the public hearing, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. We're now up to preliminary zoning approval. On, uh, item seven A, we will consider and take action on a preliminary zoning approval of zoning change request from Hugh Patrick Constructors, Inc. to rezone six point zero eight two one acres from District E, General Business, to District F, Light Industrial, for third-party storage of industrial equipment, materials, and supplies, and other uses for, uh, located at twenty-six twenty-eight Texas Avenue, north of Texas Avenue, and east of Twenty-seventh Street. Um, is there any more discussion? Kim, did this, this went before the zoning commission, right? Did you, did you tell us what?
It did go before the zoning commission and was, uh, recommended to approve, uh, with a unanimous vote.
Okay. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve this zoning request, and seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're up to public comments. Uh, public comments. Those who request to address the commission have up to three minutes to address the commission on any item from this point forward on the agenda that we, is up for consideration. First, we have Mr. Wayne Dolcifino. Mr. Dolcifino, you can approach the podium. Again, you have up to three minutes. You wish to discuss item four C and item nine G. Item nine G is the only thing that, uh, you're eligible to discuss on your request to address the commission.
If, if we're, if citizens are restricted to agenda items and the proclamations are item number four, why aren't they, why, why can't I talk about the police?
Well, you can talk about anything on the agenda that's to be considered beyond public comments.
Okay, so proclamations, people, people don't have a right to comment, oppose a proclamation if they want it to.
No sense in opposing a proclamation. It's not something for consideration.
Okay, well, just so your audience knows, I wanted to talk about how dozens of police officers are leaving, and if you praise them, you should explain why there's so much retaliation against the officers. But if I can't talk about that, um, I saw on the agenda nine G, which is a housing construction grant. And, look, I think housing is very important, especially low-income housing in communities. Um, but if we're gonna talk about housing grants, we should not deny the people the right to have a public discussion of another housing project, which is the Margaritaville Project, which is a potential billion-dollar investment into this city, whether you like it or don't like it. The, the fact that you don't allow the city commission to have a public discussion over housing is so important.
Go ahead and restore some order. You asked to speak to this agenda item. Those topics you are discussing are not on the agenda item. For the sake of decorum and following the protocols of this meeting, I would ask that you stick to this because you've been warned about this before, and so we want to make sure that you're speaking on the item up for consideration that you put on the form.
Sure, and I appreciate the warning, Mayor, and if you'd like to testify, then I'm more than happy to do that in court. But I, I, I do want to, uh, support any grant that provides more housing, which is why I think people have a right to a little democracy that you promised when you ran and are now violating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to address the commission, we have Mr. Henry Gomez. Uh, Mr. Gomez, you wrote that you wish to discuss item G, and then you put a resolution number, but those two don't match up, so I'm not sure which one you wanted to discuss.
Well, I, I must apologize to you. It was actually the, uh, the item of the school district, uh, receiving over five thousand dollars. The school district is so rich, it's pathetic. And, and the foundation, the, the, uh, Commissioner of District Four is not here to kinda explain what this is about, and she's on the board directors of, of, of this foundation. And that, I, I think the foundation has millions of dollars, and they don't really need it. This is just a pay raise for the teachers, and I do not support it. Uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I do wanna let everybody know that the Texas City Foundation for the Future does not give salary or pay raises to the teachers. They're a nonprofit organization that funds unfunded needs, uh, of the teachers in school district through special programs and projects. And, um, that request is being brought forward by Commissioner Bowie, not Commissioner Clark in her absence. So, uh, I'm sorry, it is Commissioner Clark. I'm sorry, Commissioner, uh, Love, I'm sorry, Commissioner Love, not Commissioner Clark. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, just want to point a correction there for the official record. None of the monies, uh, of the Foundation for the Future go towards teacher salaries. Is that correct? Okay. All right, so we will move on to our next request to address the commission. Mr. Jose Boyk wishes to speak on agenda item nine D.
Thank you, Mr., uh, Mayor Dedrick and Commissioners. My name is, uh, Jose Boyk. I've lived in Texas City for over sixty years. Um, uh, I was, uh, I, I learned something new by looking at the agenda, and I've been here for this long, and then all of a sudden realized that, um, that Valero are our friends and, and partners, Valero, and you all are entering on a partnership to actually beneficially, innovatively, and creatively use water, something that is very dear to us, the use of water. In fact, this morning, I was at the, uh, meeting at the Golden Division, uh, and there was a presentation about the water management around the whole county. And, and all of a sudden, I read this thing, and, and you have a tremendous, uh, uh, innovative program to reuse water into the chemical industry. Uh, you know, I'm, as an environmental engineer that retired from the chemical industry, I totally support, uh, Valero in, and the city in, in getting that partnership. So I hope it works, and I hope, the other thing I wanted to, to find, to, to do is to actually publicize more that effort, because I think we have a lot of water that perhaps goes out waste, and it could be reused. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyk. Appreciate it. All right, that's all I have who have requested to address the commission. We are moving on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have before you consent agenda items, uh, nine A through H. If there are any of these that you would like pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this time. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda items.
I'm sorry, who's the second? The second? Okay. Um, a motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve all consent agenda items nine A through H, and was seconded by Commissioner Knoxen. Any further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Up to regular items ten A, consider and take action on the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero eight to set the speed zones for FM five seventeen as recommended by Tech dot on the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation. We'll hear from our city engineer.
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon again, Mayor Commissioners. Um, again, this is your third and final reading. Um, this is based on a recommendation from Tech dot that we've had reviewed by our traffic engineering consultant and concurs in the recommendation of changing the speed limit from fifty-five miles an hour to fifty miles an hour along FM five seventeen from the West City Limits to the intersection of State Highway one forty-six, a distance of approximately two point two eight four miles. Um, once, if you, if you vote to approve this, the ordinance will be provided to Tech dot, and then they will make the change.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, anybody have any questions of Ms. Kim Golden?
Motion to approve orders twenty-two-five zero eight.
A second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero eight on the third and final reading. That was seconded by Ms. Bowie, Commissioner Bowie. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll continue that effort on consider and take action on the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero nine to set speed zones for FM five nineteen as recommended by Tech dot on the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation. Mrs. Golden?
So likewise, this is your third and final, so if you approve it tonight, it will be provided to Tech dot, and they will implement it. This is, this is a little bit more complicated. This is changing the speed limit on, um, FM five nineteen from the West City Limit to, um, the intersection of Grant Avenue, a, a distance of approximately point, four point three one miles to forty-five miles per hour. It, it is currently posted different on the two sides of the road, but appears to be posted as fifty miles an hour on the westbound. This will make both sides posted forty-five. Um, then from five nine, five nineteen from Grant Avenue to eighteen hundred and ninety-five feet west of the intersection of Loop one ninety-seven, a distance of approximately one point zero one four miles, the speed limit will be fifty. It currently appears to be posted forty-five on one side and fifty on the other. This will make it fifty on both sides. And then the last section from eight hundred, eighteen hundred and ninety-five feet west of the intersection of nine, of Loop one ninety-seven to the loop, a distance of approximately point three five nine miles, the speed limit will be posted as forty-five. And, and we don't see that it's posted right now. And again, all that is under Tech dot jurisdiction, how it's posted now and how it will be once you, um, approve this ordinance.
For the sake of consistency, Mayor, I approve ordinance twenty-five, twenty-two-five zero nine.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero nine, and was seconded by Commissioner Bowie. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will consider and take action on resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero eight, approving a three-year renewal with CDW dash G for Microsoft three sixty-five. We'll hear from our, uh, IT Director, Mr. Kyle Hunter.
Good morning, or good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Woo, long day. Uh, in front of you is a resolution for a three-year Microsoft three sixty-five government cloud agreement, uh, that supports about five hundred and forty licenses of various tiers across the city that city staff uses. Uh, this is licenses that allow us access to Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, um, along with security protocols for the mobile devices and stuff that they carry. The annual cost is about two hundred and one thou, uh, thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. The total three-year cost is six hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty. And I did wanna note that the, there was two hundred thousand that was in the twenty-two-five budget, budgeted for this renewal.
All right.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hunter, we use these, this has been going on with this company, right?
Yes.
This is a renewal?
Yes.
How long have we been doing this with this?
Uh, this is a three-year renewal. We had a three-year new renewal previous to that.
Okay.
I was notified, uh, somewhere around February that it was up for renewal.
And as far as you're concerned, there's been no problems with?
No problem.
Has it gone up?
Huh?
In cost?
Uh, the cost has gone up slightly, but mainly not necessarily per license, but because we add staff and we add licenses for different products.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Motion to approve the renewal, Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to renew the, uh, Microsoft's license for three years, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Uh, next item is ten D, to consider and take action on resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero four nine, awarding a contract for ITB twenty-two-five dash four seven eight sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, phase twenty-four. We hear from Mr. Jack Harrelson, our Director of Public Works.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. Uh, this is for our latest phase. It's a yearly phase of, uh, sanitary sewer rehab. Um, on the April the ninth, Mayor, we, uh, we received six bids ranging from one point one three to one point, uh, four million dollars. Uh, the, uh, responsible old bidder was, uh, CZ Construction, who we are recommending. In fact, this is phase twenty-four, and they just completed phase twenty-three, so that it's gonna work out great, them just sliding right on, uh, into the next phase work. We're, we're more than happy with their, um, their, their progress and, and, and the product that they leave us, so we're happy to recommend these guys. This is gonna be funded through our utility bills.
All right. Thank you, Jack. Commissioners, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve this agenda item, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jack. We have another item on ten E, consider and take action on resolution twenty-two-five dash zero five zero, awarding the contract for ITB twenty-two-five dash four seven seven waterline replacement project. awarding the contract for ITB twenty twenty-five dash four seven seven Waterline Replacement Project Phase twenty-two. Mr. Harrelson?
Uh, yes, sir. This is, uh, very similar to the, the previous item. This is our water line replacement, uh, yearly phase project. So this is phase twenty-two. Uh, on April ninth, yet again, we opened eight bids ranging from one point three, almost one point four, to one point seven seven million dollars. Uh, we got a new contractor that we haven't worked with before. Uh, that was the low responsible bidder. We did a lot of checking. Uh, kinda went overboard with our references just because we wanna make sure that we're comfortable with this decision. We didn't see anything in the references that, uh, would cause us to eliminate these guys. So, uh, we're happy to recommend them. Uh, Bull G Construction is the name of the contractor, and we're looking forward to having a good project and another good contractor to work with in the future, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jack. Anyone have any questions of, Mr. Harrelson? These, both sewer rehab project and this water line replacement project are extremely vital to, uh, the ongoing work that Public Works is doing. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve by Commissioner Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, this time we're up to Commissioners' comments. We'll start down here with you, Commissioner Sharp, first, and switch it up and work our way down District One.
I'd say it's Small Business Week, so get out and support our small businesses right here in Texas City. It's the best you can do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Commissioner Garza?
I agree with that comment, Commissioner Sharp, and I also wanna say, uh, Nicole, the Cinco de Mayo event was very successful. This is the biggest they've ever had, and I got calls after it was over, and they were very pleased, so thank you for, for that.
Thank you very much. Nothing but great things about the Cinco de Mayo program. Thank you for presenting that proclamation on my behalf in my absence. Commissioner Bowie?
Okay, I have a couple of small things. Uh, in addition to, um, the proclamations made earlier, uh, this is also Teacher Appreciation Week. And, um, the, the grant that Commissioner Love, uh, was voted on today uh, helps to support, uh, grants and different initiatives for our teachers and our staff in Texas City ISD. In fact, today we have with us, uh, Mrs. Jenny White. She manages the foundation. Jenny, would you stand up? This morning, we braved the weather and the rain to, um, set up at several schools, but we primarily had Sims Elementary, uh, Chick-fil-A, uh, mini and biscuits and orange juice, iced coffee, you name it. Uh, we wanted to make our teachers feel very, very special for all that they do for our students. So Jenny, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Love. It's all for a worthy cause.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Commissioner Bowie. Commissioner Love?
Uh, she took the words right out of my mouth, so, uh, but nothing outside of that, uh, we won't have a meeting next week, so it's National Police Week, so, uh, y'all stay safe out there.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Knoxen?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Reverend Lang left, but I wanted to thank him for those kind words. Uh, also, I couldn't leave out a few people. I know Commissioner, uh, Bowie had received some phone calls about that part, property as well, so, um, you know, pretty much a joint effort there, and couldn't leave out the Neighborhood Improvement Services Department, uh, for taking care of that for us as well. So, uh, thank you to all of you involved in it. Next, uh, if you may know that I provide a scholarship to Texas City High School. I've been doing that for the last twelve years. Um, this is my twelfth, going on my twelfth year here, uh, this year that I've provided that scholarship. It's called Sting to Sting. So, wanted to let you guys know, if you know any seniors that are, uh, looking forward to continuing their education, whether it be trade school, community college, or university, please encourage them to visit their council's office. The scholarship is still open. Uh, my email is attached to the application that they can reach out to me, um, to submit their application. And, uh, this will be the second year that I've been providing a scholarship to Lamarck High School, since I'm the Commissioner of District One. A lot of those resident students, kids, attend, uh, Lamarck High School, so I thought it was right to provide a scholarship over there as well. If you know any Lamarck High School students, please encourage them as well to visit their council's office to, uh, look for the Sting to Cougar, uh, scholarship application. And, um, lastly, some, some more exciting news. Uh, this Saturday, uh, May tenth, at NRG Stadium, I'll be graduating with my bachelor's degree from University of Houston Clear Lake. Uh, it's been a, been a journey, uh, you know, it's been a long journey, but I always appreciate the journey 'cause when you look back, uh, you know, you look at so many, um, you know, challenging times that you overcame and look at where you are now, so, I just appreciate to those who supported me along, along the way, so, thank you, Mayor.
Never a race, Commissioner. Never a race.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Knoxen, and congratulations to you on that, uh, upcoming achievement. Um, wanna thank all the Commissioners for their participation here today. I wanna really just, again, underscore and thank, um, Ms. Nicole Miller for working with the Zulak Organization for a successful Cinco de Mayo parade and program. The city really enjoyed that, uh, I can tell by all the comments that we've been receiving. A big shout-out to, uh, Ms. Titi Lio Smith for Keep Texas City Beautiful campaign. They had their, uh, park cleanup this weekend at Carver Park, and, uh, that's always a success, and we can go out there and pick up trash and paint fences and plant trees and do everything we can do to keep not only our community, uh, clean, but also our parks. Uh, it's beautiful. Uh, to all those who received proclamations today, congratulations, uh, to you all, and we thank you from the municipal clerks to, to, uh, law enforcement. And actually, I had, uh, an opportunity to, uh, present, um, and even Small Business Week, I had an opportunity to present a proclamation today, um, that was outside of this meeting, because next week is Children's Apaxia Syndrome. Um, it's a, uh, it's a, an illness that affects, uh, children who have speech impediments. And, uh, that awareness is on May fourteenth, and so that's our off week. We don't have a commission meeting, but we did have a citizen whose child, um, struggles with CAS syndrome, and they came today and we presented that proclamation. So we'll have a copy of that on our social media website as well, so we're very thankful to them. And, uh, so that's all I have. I'm going to ask, um, our staff first if you have any, um, updates or comments or reports from your respective departments. And if you do, you can make your way, uh, to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners and citizens of Texas City, mark your calendar for, uh, a week from this coming Saturday, May seventeenth is the Lone Star Deluxe Car Show. It's a great event. It's going to be on Sixth Street. Uh, they start arriving as early as seven AM. They'll be there all day. From roughly ten AM to two PM is the best viewing time. It's gonna be a great opportunity, so invite you all to come on out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Branson. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. First of all, I wanna thank you for your ongoing support with this activity. This was, I believe, our fourth year doing the Great American Cleanup. This year, we had, did Carver Park again, which is where we started, and it turned out so beautifully. And I think that it's really important for people to understand what beautification does to a neighborhood because it makes the people in the neighborhood feel better about where they live, and it also prompts them to do more on their property as well. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Patricia Mata from my staff, and then Ms. Nicole Miller and her staff were just so phenomenal, um, in helping us to get this job done. And so we did clean up at Carver Park, and we also did clean up in beautification at the Bell House, and, um, take a ride by.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Appreciate it. Ms. Laird, Department of Communications.
I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a new special podcast launching next week in honor of Police Week. It is our Texas City Tales Unsolved, where we were fortunate enough to be joined by Detective Sergeant Winstead, and he is sharing details about unsolved cases. He told me that we do not call them cold cases because for him, they are never cold. Um, our police department takes pride in never forgetting victims and never stopping to look for the people who are responsible for, um, these crimes and bringing them to justice, so. Um, and a thank you to Mainland Community Crime Stoppers for increasing their rewards on these particular cases that we're highlighting. So if there's new information that leads to the resolution of these cases, people can get up to ten thousand dollars. So it's a very important, very worthy podcast, and we are very grateful. And thank you Chief Cravens for all of your support and your officer's support. I know we ask them to do crazy things sometimes, but instead of just dismissing it as TikTok gimmicks, um, your officers are always so willing to jump in and do absolutely anything to reach the community, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Laird. We have any other staff who has any reports or updates? Ms. Barbara, you itching to just say something? Go ahead and let us know.
I'm sure you are. Thank you very much. I wanna brag for a minute on Valero and Cory Moss. We are having our Valero backpack giveaway on August the second from nine to one at Lockton Middle School. Thanks to him, we are giving away five hundred backpacks, building supplies. I kinda cheated a little. This five thousand dollar grant that I asked Mr. Love to get for us is to give other necessary items to our children. None of that is gonna be wasted on us. It all goes for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm familiar.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
I, I am familiar with, with, uh, the, both the foundation and that grant request, which is why I allowed you an opportunity to tell the commission, thank you, and, and tell us a little bit more about that. The, um, the, the funds, um, that were approved today will partially, uh, provide assistance with, and we wanna thank Valero for doing what they do relative to our students and the foundation, um, because there's so much that the teachers do with those, uh, funds that help our students. So, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All right.
Second.